Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the school committee meeting of November 5th. As we start all meetings, I'd like to remind everyone here tonight, this meeting is being broadcast live, it is also being recorded for use at a later date if need be. I'd ask you to please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. Also, would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag?
(Inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we start, as you can see, we have a very minimal agenda this evening. We have a school committee meeting on the 13th, which is next week on a Wednesday, and the agenda will probably be full depending on certain things that have come up. We haven't met in a little bit because we've had some issues internally, and we're here tonight to discuss some unfinished business. I'd ask you to please remember that we need to be cognizant of everyone that's going to speak tonight. Please come up to the podium, tell us who you are, which town you're from, and where you live. Also, I've had some complaints in previous meetings that while people are speaking at the podium, people in the gallery are speaking also, and they can't hear clearly what's going on, so I'd ask you to please give whoever at the podium all your attention, and please be quiet so everyone can hear exactly what they're saying. Everyone will have an opportunity to speak, everyone that wants to speak. Also, there's been some social media myths traveling around that to do with the assessment that the town of Whitman was trying to balance their budget through the town of Hanson's fortune of how this assessment's coming out. That is totally 100% untrue. The town of Whitman is trying to find a long-range plan for planning to make sure that they keep their current success in all of their financial endeavors. This assessment issue came up through some other meetings, and it is coincidental. It is not one town pitting against the other, I want to make that very clear. It is not. It is two towns, we are a regional school district, this committee's charge is to advocate for children and get them the best education that we possibly can for the best financial boot to both towns, and that's what we're trying to do. So having said that, I entertain a motion to approve the minutes of September 18th.
So moved.
Second. Discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. Okay. Unfinished business. Regional agreement assessment method discussion. We have some people here this evening from DESI, which is Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. Christine Lynch is here. Christine, could you stand up, please, so everybody? And Michelle Griffin. Thank you both for coming. We have several boards of selectmen, I mean both-town boards of selectmen are here, we have some town managers here, we have the teachers' organization, of education organization, here and represented with Kevin. Everybody's here to discuss this tonight, and we're hoping to get some more clarity. The finance committees are here. I applaud all the town officials for coming. This is a thing that we have to work our way through. Does anyone have any questions for me before we start? Seeing none.
So, one of the charges from our September meeting was to ask questions arose, and there wanted to be a public perspective or an invitation to the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, Christine Lynch, to maybe answer some questions that we had from the board or from some of the gallery regarding the regional assessment. As we all know, what's in play is the agreement method that we've been following as a district since 1991, and the statutory method, which is a method that is, I want to preface, both legal methods of assessing. We've been using a strict per pupil assessment to both communities. The statutory method, as I presented in September, is more a minimum local contribution, starting point, and then an assessment to the community. So I asked Christine and Michelle to come here to answer questions regarding the legalities, answer questions to what both the statutory and agreement methods are, and particularly what happens if the communities don't come up with a method of assessment, what happens to our budget, and what happens in July of that fiscal year regarding the Commissioner of Education taking over the district. So those are some of the questions that we talked about in September. I asked those folks here, Andy Waugh, who is our legal counsel from the regional district is here also to answer any questions, so I kind of leave it up to the committee and to ask Christine, she traveled from Boston, from Alden today. Christine is a retired employee of DESI, so she works a couple days a week, so she made a special trip for us, so hopefully she can answer some of our questions.
Christine. Thank you. Thank you, Jeff.
You want to make?
Yes, go on up, please.
All right. I didn't know if you wanted me just to answer questions, or if you'd like some introductory remarks.
Yeah. Could you give us a brief statement on the statutory method and the agreement method, please?
Sure. First of all, thank you for inviting me here tonight, and I'm sorry it's taken me so long to get here, but I have been in communication, I think written communication at least, with some of you, probably around the table, and some of your town officials as well. So I appreciate the opportunity to be here to speak to all of you, so we can all be talking from the same talking points, basically. I have some handouts that I'll pass around in a little bit, but one of the things I want to mention, tomorrow I actually will be, Michelle and I both will be at the Mass Association of School Superintendents and Mass Association of School Committees meeting down at the Cape, and the very topic is going to be the assessment methodology. So I have a handout from that presentation that I'll be giving tomorrow that I'll share with all of you as well, so that you will have that information, and maybe I'll see some of you down there tomorrow. But just by way of a little bit of background, I want to go back all the way to 1993, and I won't belabor the point moving up all of those years, but just by way of some background, you all know that the educational reform law was passed back in 1993, and in addition to providing some very stringent requirements, educational requirements and benchmarks and so forth, it also made a major change in the Chapter 70 state aid. And for the first time, what was established was a foundation budget, and each city and town across the state was required to come up with what was called a minimum local contribution. And that local contribution was based on a series of very complicated factors that are spelled out in the law, but basically it was based on the equity of the town and the students that it was serving, based on property value, average income, municipal revenue growth factor, a number of different factors. But for the first time, every individual town within Massachusetts was required to come up with a certain minimum level of spending in order to reach a foundation level of spending established by the state. And the promise from the state was if towns were to increase their level of spending, the state at the same time would increase its level of spending such that over at that time, a seven-year period of time, each city and town across the Commonwealth would reach their foundation budget. Now, in establishing this new process, unfortunately, there was very little consideration of towns that were members of regional school districts. So the requirement that was established indicated that each town, regardless of how many districts, or whether they were in a regional district, or how many districts they might be in, they were required to give a certain amount of money. Now, you all know from your regional agreement that when most regional agreements were established back in, actually, the early 1950s, it's when the law was passed, it was 1949 the law was passed to allow regions, most regional agreements that were established in those ensuing years used a per pupil method of apportioning costs. They all sat down, they all agreed to that, these agreements were approved at town meeting, everyone was happy with that method, or presumably, there was probably some glitches along the line, but presumably, most regional, there hasn't been a region, there's only been one regional agreement that has been disbanded over all these years. So presumably, most of the districts who had agreed to that methodology were pretty happy with it. Educational reform comes along, and it says, I'm paraphrasing, but I have the exact language written in the slide that I'll share with you later, but basically, it says notwithstanding the provisions of the regional school district agreement, each town will provide its minimum local contribution to support education in that district. So, and it also went on to add, any other costs that might be needed to support the school committee's budget would be apportioned according to their existing regional agreement. So that language in itself set up this two-step process. First, each town had to meet its minimum contribution, anything else over and above that, in total, combine the state aid, combine the member town's minimum local contributions, any amount over that needed to support the school committee's budget would be apportioned according to the agreement methodology, which as I said, with some exceptions, it was based on how many students did the town have. If you had 40% of the students, you paid 40% of that added cost. The additional things, every district had amounts over the minimum contribution because districts had transportation costs, they may have capital costs, and there may be some other costs that they were not, a district would not be satisfied with only meeting the minimum level of spending that the state required. There's obviously, from the beginning of educational reform, there were many towns that were spending at a much higher level than the minimum level that was established by the state back in 1993. That has only accelerated over the intervening years. So towns are, many districts and many towns are well over the required spending at this stage of the game. That may change with new changes in Chapter 70, but I'm not here really to discuss that, those new changes. So this all came about, you know, as I say, back in 1993. Districts at that time, after a year or so of implementation, districts complained, basically, to their local legislators to say, this does not seem fair to us, we all agreed back in 1950 when we established the regional agreement, we were all happy with the method that we used, why can't we use that method? Meaning, for the most part, a per pupil method. The legislature agreed, language was added to the regional school district law, an amendment was filed and passed that basically said, yes, regional school districts can use the agreement method, you can go back to that method, but they set a higher bar. Instead of a two-thirds approval of the budget, which is your typical way to approve a regional school committee budget by a two-thirds town vote, two-thirds of the member towns, the requirement then became, you have to approve it unanimously. If you're, basically, if you're saying you're not happy because all of the towns originally that approved forming this regional agreement unanimously approved this method, then moving forward, yes, you can use this method, but you need the unanimous approval of your member towns. So you can do that in either a two-step process, you can have two different, towns can have two different votes. One can say, yes, we approve unanimously, the concept of using the statutory, I'm sorry, the agreement methodology, and then move on to the actual approval of a district budget, and that can be by a two-thirds vote. Or you can have a one-step process that basically says unanimous approval of the budget or the, or your assessments, member towns' assessments constitutes approval of the method. So you can do it either of two ways. The assumption being, under either of those scenarios, is that the member towns know what they're, know what they're approving. So information should be provided to the member towns as to what methodology is being used to calculate their individual assessments to support the budget. Now, you are a two-town region, so I certainly understand the fact that you can't, a two-thirds approval of your budget under the statutory methodology requires unanimous approval, and approval under the agreement method requires unanimous approval. You're a two-town region. If you are a three-town, five-town, 20-town, obviously, it would make a difference in terms of two-thirds of the total number of member towns in your, in your regional district. In your case, you know, unanimous approval of the budget might not automatically indicate approval of the method, as I guess we've sort of seen, is that there was apparently no knowledge or no awareness on the part of at least some, that there were two different methodologies that potentially could be used. But that's basically, moving forward, the school committee has the option of choosing the method. Now, obviously, we encourage the school committee, obviously, to work with the local member towns and their town officials to discuss the different methods, discuss the impact of those different methods, and to hopefully come to some agreement, a meeting of the minds, in terms of what method will be used moving forward. And that that information, obviously during budget time, should be provided to the town to say, we're using the statutory method, or we're using the agreement method, and here's how the assessments calculate out based on either of those two different methodologies. And so when towns are voting on the, the school committee as well, when the school committee's voting on the budget, as well as when the towns are voting on the budget, that they're doing so with the full awareness of which methodology is being used. So I do have a PowerPoint, I have the legal citations. The law, as I mentioned, outlines two different methodologies. One is under Chapter 70, which is the school finance statute. That's what we call the statutory methodology. The other is the amendment that was subsequently passed, two years later, was passed in 1996, to allow school districts and towns to use the agreement method. That is an amendment to Chapter 71, which is the regional school district law. So both methodologies are in statute, they're also in our, we have regional regulations. Both methods are outlined in the regional regulations that the department issues, and there is also some guidance on the department's website to describe in a little more detail how those different methodologies may differ in terms of the actual calculations that might, might need to be made in order to meet one of the other of those two different methodologies. So I guess the only thing, other thing I'll add, and I don't want to take up a lot of time, you may have some questions, but there are somewhere, and I should know this off the top of my head, but somewhere in the range of 30, 30 districts or something that are two-town districts. So there's, there's a lot of districts that are in your situation. You're not unique. Many of these districts have gone through this over past years, so it's not something unusual that you're in a position of trying to determine which methodology to use. You're not unique in the sense of, depending on what methodology is used, it may favor one town versus the other. You have two different methodologies, it's bound to impact the towns differently. Towns, many towns, over time, have come to some agreement, and it's a measure of, again, a meeting of the minds, some compromise, to reach a point where they can move forward and get their budget passed each year without having, you know, a lot of discussions. Come to the agreement in terms of what methodology might be used, so that every year during budget cycle, you're not in a contentious situation. And again, other towns have gone through this, some other towns are going through this as we speak, because even if you can agree, or even when towns do agree on the methodology to be used, in any given year's budget cycle, because of issues that might arise in the total amount of the budget that might be needed in any given year to support students from the school committee's perspective, towns may not be happy with those numbers. So in any given year, regional school districts could have some difficulty in passing a budget. But the methodology, it would, it's certainly helpful if there can be some agreement in terms of how to move forward, at least in terms of the calculation. I guess the one last thing I might mention is, I'll emphasize this point first, either methodology, as I mentioned, is perfectly legal and outlined in statute, but if a regional school committee or school district finds itself without a budget in any given year, there is some authorization by the Commissioner of Education to establish a temporary budget for the year come July 1st. So if a district does not have a budget, a locally approved budget by July 1st, the Commissioner is authorized by law to set a temporary budget for the year. And that budget, I continue to emphasize, is not the Commissioner's analysis of the correct amount of money that is needed by any given district at any given point in time. It's no reflection on any deep analysis on the part of the department in terms of what we think a district should be spending. All it is, is to allow the district to function after July 1st. If there's no budget come July 1st, you can't pay any bills, there's no mechanism in law to allow a district to pay, to spend any money if a budget is not passed. So the Commissioner is allowed to send, and does, set a 1/12 budget. That 1/12 budget has been established, has been, how we would, how we would require the towns to be, to the calculations to be made for the assessment would be based on the statutory methodology. We did not want to just say, do whatever you want, you'd be back in the same position as not agreeing in terms of what the method would be. So in order to just have the district be able to function until such time as a local budget was approved, hopefully, we require that the assessments calculated under a 1/12 budget be done based on the statutory methodology. Likewise, should December 1st, should it, should there be no local budget approved by December 1st, the statute also requires the Commissioner to take over fiscal control of the district, set the final budget for the year, and under that scenario, the assessments must be calculated under the statutory methodology. So, moving forward, again, certainly the advice would be, look at the two different methodologies, look at how they impact your, both, both towns, try to come to some agreement in terms of the best methodology to use moving forward. And I had mentioned this earlier, but there are some districts in the state who have determined to use the statutory methodology moving forward, changing from their previous method of using the agreement, and have put in place a timeframe during which meeting the statutory method would occur. So in other words, it wouldn't occur in a one-year period of time. If there was a significant difference in impact on a member town to use the statutory methodology, that language has been put into regional agreements to say that the goal would be over, let's say, a five-year period of time, to increase such each year, so that at the end of five years, as I'm using just an example of five years, but at the end of a certain period of time, that the town would come up to, let's say, if you wanted to use the statutory methodology, to come up to the correct statutory methodology of spending. So there can be a, there can be certainly a discussion in terms of language to include in your regional school district agreement to potentially include, include in your written agreement to be approved by the two towns, a methodology that will be somewhat of, hopefully, a compromise measure to reach a certain level of spending, each town would reach a certain level of spending over a period of time, rather than flip from one year to the next and have a big impact potentially on any given town. So I will stop there, but be certainly willing, hopefully able to answer questions.
Fred?
I just want to make sure I fully comprehend. We go to town meeting, and we have either-or method. One town rejects it, one town approves it. Comes back to the school committee, we either send it back, in other words, they would have the right to vote on the method as well as the amount.
You can do it two different ways. The school committee, first of all, does have the right to choose the method. And again, I mentioned earlier, and I would certainly always encourage the school committee to work with their towns in coming up with the method. I mean, there, you know, hopefully there, there's some discussion, and you may not all come to, you know, the final unanimous approval in terms of what method to use, in terms of individual people and town officials sitting around the table, but the school committee ultimately has the right to propose the method. So the school committee can propose the method of, of whatever, statutory or the agreement. If they, let's say, propose the agreement method, you could, you could, the towns could approve it either in a two-step process or a one-step process. Two-step process would be they deliberately vote only on, first, only on what method, and they could vote that down. One town could vote it down.
And then the process?
And then the second, second vote would be approval of the actual budget language. Typically, again, two-town regions would do it in a one-step process because, rather than taking two-town votes, but either is certainly acceptable. Most, most regional, most two-town regional school districts would do it as a one-stage process, where approval of the budget by, in this case, two towns, would again constitute approval of the method.
Now it comes back, because one town rejected it?
So one town didn't approve it, and it comes back, yes.
We send it back to town meeting a second time?
The school committee can reconsider it, they can increase it, decrease it, change the method, keep it the same, same number, same total number, same method. They can basically have a lot of authority in terms of how they want to deal with that reconsidered budget. But yes, ultimately, after the school committee looks at it again, they send it back to town meeting. Town could again vote it down. Go back to the school committee. School committee again has the authority to say, we'll reduce it, increase it, you know, do whatever they basically want to do. At that point, typically, you're bumping up against the July 1st date, so the requirement then is that you have a two-town district-wide meeting, at which all of the resident voters are invited and hopefully attend for the purposes of voting on the regional budget.
And the assessment method to be used at that is only statutory?
And the assessment method at that point would be statutory, correct.
Okay. I have a question for that. So it appears from what you've just said to us about both methods, either method can be changed to ease a town into it or out of it, whether it's statutory or agreement. The committee could come up with, say, this is just a number I'm making up. Of, okay, we have agreed that the statutory method is going to be used, we're going to take town A, who has to pay XYZ number, and ease them in at a third, a third, a third for the next three years. In other words, can you take the methodology, whether it's statutory or agreement, even though it defaults to statutory, and amend it to say it doesn't have to be all done at once as long as both towns agree? Is it legal to amend it?
Yes.
It sounds like what you're saying, it is.
But I want to clarify what I'm talking about in terms of amend it. Amend it means amending the regional school district agreement. So you would have to have language in your regional school district agreement that basically- So you would have to have language in your regional school district agreement that basically changes the agreement methodology. Doesn't change the statutory methodology, it changes the agreement methodology. And in that language, it would have to say something like, "We're going to, the agreement methodology is designed," let's say, you know, and I can't think of the words exactly to lay this out at the moment, but basically to say what you just said, that over a three-year period of time, or again, pick a, pick a, pick a period of time, that this is how it's going to be done, and how it's designed to be done, and how it, in effect, will be done, is to, let's say, increase that one town's contribution level by a third, you know. And how that's written up is, you know, we'll have to figure out the language of it.
We need a lawyer.
Basically, the idea is, you know, the agreement method does now, will no longer necessarily say, you know, it's all per pupil, or, you know, whatever. It will be laid out such that the agreement method will allow for a calculation that is designed to, to show, or to, to, to put into effect a process by which that town, let's say, would increase gradually over some negotiated period of time.
So then, henceforth and likewise, it could say, again, we need the lawyers to write it up. X, Y, Z town could pay a third, a third, a third. And in the ending, when it's caught up, both towns agree that the statutory method moving forward is the method to be used after the three years is passed. Because the swing could go the other way to ABC town.
Right.
Do you follow what I'm saying? This, the demographics change in the town.
Sure.
And it changes the pendulum of which way the money comes from.
Yeah, it's, the towns, you would always have the option of using the full agreement method. And of course, you have the option of using the statutory methodology. But if you write language that is designed, deliberately designed, to reach a level where, you know, the town is raising its contribution such that it would reasonably match, you know, what the, what the statutory method is, you, I don't, you'd have to have, in addition to that, some language that said, "Once you reach that level, then what happens?" You know, because, okay, over a three-year period, as an example, what happens in the third year? I mean, you know, you still have to have a methodology for apportioning costs as a fallback, I guess, position. So, I think that language could be developed, you know. And I, again, I do have a couple of examples. I don't know off the top of my head exactly how it's phrased by these other agreements in terms of, once they reach that level, then, then, you know, what happens in terms of, how do you sort of maintain, you know, moving forward?
But I guess.
There needs to be some language like that.
I guess my question is, before we go to Mr. Jones, you can modify the agreement as long as both towns agree, and you have an attorney write it up so it, the legal jargon is all legal. It can be modified, is the, okay?
Yes. And the Commissioner would need to approve it as well.
That's what I'm saying.
But, yes, both towns would need to approve it, and the Commissioner would need to approve it. But yes, you certainly can look at the methodology that you currently have and modify it in a way that, you know, hopefully, you all can collectively come to some agreement on.
Thank you. Mike, and then Chris.
Is there a law or a penalty or anything against us if we keep abiding by our Whitman-Hanson regional school agreement the way we've always done it? Is there something stating that, like that we can't do what?
No.
Business as we've been.
Both methodologies are legal, but if you reach a point where there's an impasse on the budget, then you have to use the statutory.
But by abiding by the?
You might reach a certain point, and there continues to be an impasse, and then the statutory has to kick in, you know, so.
But abiding by the way it is written now, we are 100%. There's nothing saying we have to change anything.
Again, not unless you're, reach a budget impasse, and then you, you have to use a different methodology. But, no, your, your agreement, using, there's no moving backwards, going forward, all these years you've been using your agreement, there's nothing illegal about that.
Okay, thank you, yeah.
It's legal.
Thank you.
Chris?
So I think part of my confusion, and maybe others, is around the use of the terms, the statutory method or the agreement method. So just to clarify, the statutory method is very black and white. It is what it is. It's, you know, the paragraph that's very specific. I think what you're suggesting, and this is what I want to clarify, is you could use that as a basis and maybe put some, whether it's staggered timelines or other things into that. My question is, once you do that, doesn't it essentially become an alternative or agreement methodology? Because, and I think that's really important for us to understand, because I think we're getting too, sometimes too tripped up on statutory alternative, whatever. The point is that, I think as soon as you do any, what I heard you say is if we staggered it, whether it was three years or five years, or whatever the term is.
Right.
Once you do that, it is no longer the statutory method.
Correct.
It is the alternative.
It is the agreement. By the way, when I say agreement.
Yes, what I'm saying.
It's sort of interchangeable, alternative agreement. Yes, if I, I just want to make sure, I'm, I'm pretty sure we're in agreement, but, yes, if you come up with a methodology that says, "We're going to do something, you know, unusual to.
Unique.
For a three, five-year period of time," then that's not the statutory method. That, that's just not. That's going to be your agreement method. And that's why I say, for a three-year time, five-year, you know, whatever, you have something where you've all come to some agreement to say that somebody's going to ratchet up, somebody might do something else, where you have some formula that is designed over time to kind of get you to a level where there's not such a huge discrepancy between those two different methods. So you're designing something that will sort of get you to that point. That, though, is the agreement method.
Right. So, and I think that's what I just wanted to make sure was clear. Basically, if we say we're going to follow the statutory method, there is no ambiguity or grayness in terms of timing or any other subtleties that we would want to make. It is a black and white, here's what it is.
Yes.
It happens.
Yeah, that's that two-step process, minimal contribution, and then above.
Thank you for clarifying.
Exactly, yeah.
Dawn?
Thanks, Christine. Absent of any change to the regional agreement, so if we're referring to this year, we have the current regional agreement in place. The options are the current regional agreement and the statutory method, correct? Is there any mechanism where this committee could vote on a staggered, a one-third, 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 as Chair Hayes refers to?
Without a change.
Or a budget? Right, without any change to the regional agreement?
No, because you have to have some legal basis for doing it.
Okay.
We say statutory, the statute gives you that legal basis, because it says.
So in order to do any type of?
Notwithstanding the regional agreement, towns shall do this. The, so there's that, there's the authorization there for the statutory. The authorization for your agreement method is, your agreement says, "We will do this." And as I mentioned, that 1996 law says, "Yeah, that's fine. You can, you can default to that if you want with the unanimous approval." So both of those two, two, only two methodologies are authorized by the statute and, you know, are totally legal. But you can't come up with some hybrid.
Right.
Without approving your agreement.
Without approving a regional agreement. That would have to happen first.
Yeah.
Chris? So, we've obviously had several discussions and interpretations of this issue, and just three words that keep popping up. One's default, one's intent, and one's authority. And I think you've answered two of the three, where the statutory, as the state sees it, is the default method, right?
The statutory, the state sees it as the default, is that what you?
Right, that, so that, it's, when the law was passed, it was instituted in a way that they, they were having the towns follow the statutory method to meet their, you know.
Right, right. There is a law that, yes.
Yeah, so that's what I meant by default.
Okay.
And then, the authority, you just mentioned, statute gives you, with Desi, the Commissioner, the authority to institute this, right?
To institute the statutory methodology?
Yes.
We don't make anyone use one or the other.
No, without?
We, we offer, as I'm doing to you. Two different methodologies, pick one.
Right, right. But it was the more stringent requirements that you referenced earlier that would enable, that's what enabled towns to use the alternative method, correct?
Yes, I see what you're saying. Okay, so, yes, I said there's a higher bar for approving the alternative method.
Right.
And that was the, is the unanimous approval.
Right.
So, correct.
Okay.
Yes, there is that unanimous approval requirement in the amendment to the law.
Right.
To use the alternative method, correct.
My only other one was the intent, and if you could speak to the intent of the law as you understand it.
The intent of, of both?
Yes. Specifically, '93, the Reform Act, why they started considering, or, you know, why was the statutory method considered, I guess, is?
Well, yes. But, but I guess I'll preface that by saying, as I mentioned a little bit earlier, the governance structure in Massachusetts is a little unique, you know, and the concept of regional school districts and towns being in, by the way, multiple regional school districts, you're in a K-12 district. There are many districts around the state who are in an elementary district, in a secondary district, they're in a VOC district, you know, they're in two different, you know, so the, the structure of Massachusetts is, is a little unique. So, when every form was passed in 1993, I think I mentioned, the only thing it really said about regional school districts was, notwithstanding the regional school district agreement, each town shall come up with this minimum local contribution. Immediately thereafter, there was kind of a hue and cry, saying, "This is, this is disrupting, you know, all the regional school districts across the state." So, again, the law was amended shortly thereafter. But in terms of the intent, a brief intent of education reform, yes, it was certainly designed to say, it was a result of a court suit, for those of you who might remember, where either, state was going to be sued, or that was being sued, because there was not enough, according to the suit, not enough state money going into education to support educational programs. And, you know, the state is at least partially responsible for ensuring the education of students across the Commonwealth. So, in any event, major piece of legislation was enacted. The idea of it, putting aside all the educational requirements, which there were a lot, but putting those aside for the moment and concentrating on finance, the law basically said, "The state's going to give a lot more money over, at that point, a seven-year period of time." It was designed over seven years. Obviously, it's continued and amended and changed since then. But over a seven-year period of time, we're going to pour money into the education. However, we're not going to do that without the towns being on board too. So we're going to put, you know, some requirements on the towns to say that if the state's coming up with all this money, then the towns have to come up with a certain amount of money. So again, complicated formula, you know, in order to determine what are the individual towns' ability to pay. And it might be viewed as an imperfect formula, but the item, the elements used were property value, average income, municipal growth factor determined by the Department of Revenue that took into consideration the income that individual towns might receive in terms of, you know, free cash and so forth. So, it basically came up with a formula saying, "We are going to give, state is going to give you so much money, you have to come up with your share, you know, at the local level." In those early days, let me, let me just also point out that how it ultimately worked out was that if you looked at the minimum local contribution that each town was required to give, in this case, to a regional school district, and you looked at the amount of state aid that at that time, in the early years, was attached to that town, because calculation is done on a town-by-town basis. So how much money was attached to that town? Those two pieces together added up to the same per pupil amount. So let's say Whitman and Hanson in those days, and I don't, I don't know, I haven't looked back to that time, but they may have been giving different levels of tax dollars, but putting that together with the state aid that each of those two towns brought to the district, it turned out to be the same exact per pupil method. We use as an extreme but true example, Great Lawrence Regional School District is comprised, has, has two of its towns, two of its members, is comprised of the town of Andover and the city of Lawrence. City of Lawrence, at that time, in particular, provided very little tax revenue to Great Lawrence Regional VOC. They got tons of state aid, tons. Andover, if you know anything about the town of Andover, gave a lot of money, tax dollars, to the Great Lawrence Vocational District. Got very little, brought, brought very little state aid with it. But you look at the combo of those two things, they were paying the same amount per student. Now, nobody really cares about that in the sense that everybody's looking at how much they're own, paying out of their own tax dollars. But if Great Lawrence did not have Lawrence as a member, their state aid would be dramatically cut. So, and that can be true of other districts as well. So out of tax dollars, and that's what everybody cares about, and I understand that, tax dollars, one town's giving more than the other. But it's potentially the state aid that is resulting to the district as a result of the combination of those two towns, might be, you know, that that town that's giving less tax dollars is actually bringing with it to the district more state aid. If that, I don't know if that makes sense. It's hard to sort of explain that, it's almost better to show it in a chart or something, but things have changed a little bit over time so that we do not publish really how pockets of state aid was arrived at per town. It's basically, get the district, it goes to the district and it sort of gets all, you know, embroiled in the wash, so to speak. But, you know, so it has changed a little bit over time. It's, it's not so clear-cut as what I've just outlined, because the formula has changed over a period of time. But, I mean, one thing to consider is the makeup of the individual towns and the makeup of the students being sent from those individual towns is a contributing factor to how much state aid you're getting. And so, that should not be just disregarded in the sense that, you know, to only look at what you're paying out of your tax dollars. How much money might that town, who's paying less out of its tax dollars, but that, that, their configuration is bringing more state aid to the district as a whole? I don't, I don't know if that answers your question at all.
Fred, next.
And harping right on that, the statutory method puts everyone sort of at the same playing field, so to speak, with the state aid. Sort of levels the playing field, so to speak?
Well, I mean, it's kind of hard to me, to weigh in universally, because when you create a regional school district budget, typically, you take the total, you subtract all the state aid, and then you arrive at what's to be paid for by local assessments. So, in a sense, that state aid, just taken right off the top, does not necessarily benefit in accordance with the formula.
Oh, like for instance?
In accordance with the statutory elements.
Yeah. You know, if we look at the minimum local contribution for last year, Whitman's $10,631,538. The assessment for Whitman was $14,398,151. So Whitman spent $3,766,613 more than the required local contribution. Whereas if you break down Hanson's numbers, their required contribution was $8,892,401. Their assessment was $9,670,975. So they spent $778,574 more than required. I mean, there's a vast disparity in, you know, what was spent is more than the required dollars, so to speak. If you take those numbers and add them up, and then you provided the 60-40 split, you know, to round up some numbers, it almost works out to that million-dollar difference that they were anticipating. that they were anticipating, that Whitman's assessment would be a million dollars less, because they were proportionately that much more.
Well, I, I mean, you can, you can sort of argue the point either way. I, I mean, obviously, and, and, and people do, obviously, because there's such a discrepancy, there can be such a discrepancy in using either one of the numbers. You know, you can argue the point of saying that you want to look into the, the statutory methodology in terms of, at least for a portion, and by the way, it is a portion, because most districts now are well over the, the minimum level of spending, and it's been, you know, for years now, for most districts at least. So, that minimum local contribution is only dealing with a, a portion, certainly, a decent-sized portion, but a portion of the ultimate assessment that a town's, you know, being, being required to pay. So, still a portion of it, under the statutory methodology, would be based on how many students each town brings to the district. So, to the extent that a town is, has more students, then they're going to be paying a much larger amount, you know? And that would be true if you use the agreement method as well, because if it's based on students purely, the larger town is going to be paying the, the most, you know, obviously. So, you know, it's, it's difficult for me to argue one way or the other, because, again, both methodologies are, are legal, and it's just a matter of which direction you want to go.
Thank you. Don?
As far as Chapter Seventy-eight, could it be calculated that each town has a foundation budget on the DESI website, and then look at the minimum local contribution, and the difference would be the Chapter Seventy-eight per town? Is that?
I suppose it's, it's possible to simulate that. It's not, I don't think it's possible to get it exact, and the reason being is the foundation budget is, is based on the district, the students at, at the, at the district. So, you, in other words, you use K-12, we use K-12 students from your district, and there's various factors that go into accounting for different grade levels, are assigned to different portion of funding and so forth. So, the foundation budget is created at the district level. So, we don't now certainly create individual town foundation budgets. Is it possible? Probably, I, you know, I, I imagine everything's possible, you know, to...
I, maybe in my research, I was pulling the wrong number. I wasn't sure, I thought I had a foundation budget number by town, but you're not sure that that's available when you're part of a region?
No, I don't believe so. I mean, there have been towns who have asked for that, because they're either thinking of joining a region, or expanding the region, or something. So, we have simulated that information. I would honestly have to check with our, our finance office to see if that has been done on, on any universal scale. I, I don't think so, but I'm not the...
Do you speak to other two district regional schools, and which ones are using statutory method? Do you have any versus?
I'm sorry?
Other two districts, regions, which methods they are using, agreement versus statutory?
I, I think we had, I think we, the last time we looked on this, I, I thought there were seventeen towns, if I remember correctly, using the agreement methodology. So, I think I, that may not be, we're, we're getting more information currently, because this information is provided to us on our end-of-the-year pupil, I'm sorry, end-of-the-year financial reports, and those we do, while they're coming in now September thirtieth, and they get extensions to October, so we're kind of collecting the, them now. So, we'll get a better update soon, hopefully.
And that's seventeen out of all the regional school districts?
Yes, I think so, yeah. I, I believe so. And there's eighty-five, including vocs. So, vocs, vocational districts, I should say, those tend to be much, they have much larger memberships, so to get, like, Massachusetts or whatever, it's twenty towns, you know, to, to get twenty towns to agree, you know, that's, that's a...
They'd be using statutory.
That's kind of tough. So, they're using the statutory, but a lot of, especially the two-town regional school districts, have used, you know, the agreement methodology.
Chris?
Yeah, so I, I think there's been a lot of discussion around this minimum required local contribution. So, if you indulge me for about thirty seconds, so this is, this is the Chapter Seventy definition that I found, and I'm gonna raise my fingers every time there's another defined term in the definition. So, the way it reads, if I copied and pasted correctly, "The sum of, one, the preliminary local contribution, and the foundation aid percent, multiplied by the standard of effort gap in any fiscal year. This sum shall be reduced by the overburdened aid amount, if any, and the excess debt service amount, if any, provided, however, that in no case shall reduction result in a reduction of net school spending to an amount less than the foundation budget amount. The minimum required local contribution shall be defined separately for each municipality's share of each district where it belongs." So, if you actually chase all six of those defined terms down, each of those is further defined. So, it is...
Yeah, that's...
So, my, my question is, is there a simple way to understand that?
Yeah, I would not, yes. You'd have to ask Rob O'Donnell, who is the Director of our Department of Statutory Methodology. I'll say this, I was in finance for seven years, so, so I can talk about what happened seven years ago, or ten years ago, whatever, but they've changed the formula. So, and how it got changed, and again, I encourage you to talk to someone in our school finance office, but briefly, is every year in the state budget, there is, I forget what it's called, an attachment.
Amendment?
Amendment two, or amendment two, or, or something. And it, it lists all the, the cities and towns and all the state aid. That's how it's calculated now. That overburdened aid, not in place anymore. Excess, excess debt aid, not in place anymore. That was, that was, that disappeared a long time ago.
And so, was that reformed through a legislative process?
Yes, in the budget, every year, in the budget. Now, this whole, and again, I'm not the person to talk to about this, unfortunately, I apologize, but there, there is obviously a, a lot of discussion in terms of major changes in the Chapter Seventy formula in the foundation budget, as a result of the Foundation Budget Review Commission. So, there's a lot of changes, you know, and that is going to be memorialized in an amendment. But up to this point, to my knowledge, and again, forgive me if I'm misspeaking, but I don't, I don't think I am, to my knowledge, every year in the state budget, they say, "Here it is, this is what it is." And obviously, our school finance office knows what, what was built into that. And there's spreadsheets that we issue on our webpage, that goes into excruciating detail in terms of the preliminary contribution, and the municipal revenue growth factor, and the effort yield, and, you know, and how that calculation is, is made. And again, I'm not the one to speak to it, but that's where I would look, as opposed to trying to, unfortunately, read the law.
Right, and I think it just goes back to Chris's question. What I was trying to figure out, too, is what was the legislative intent, right? So, I, I like to read what the words that they wrote were, and it just, it, it seems like an exceptionally complex formula.
It, it, it still is, and it was even worse. I mean, because that overburdened aid, it has two examples that you mentioned, and excess debt, that was, just as an example, if a, if a town had recently built a, a school, and they had, were paying back, or paying a certain amount of money for a fifty-million-dollar, you know, school, the amount of that annual debt served to reduce their minimum local contribution, which was great for that town, but horrible for the district. And so, there were certain things that just went by the wayside, that, and unfortunately, yeah, you'd like to say, gee, this law should spell out exactly how things work, but not entirely. So, yeah, I'm sorry, I can't address that.
Jeff, and then Fred.
Christine, at our last school committee meeting, the school committee approved a, a new regional agreement committee to look at revising the ninety-one agreement. In your experience, is it possible for us to get that done for the next fiscal year with the commissioner's approval? Say, this committee started, it's, reform it, we meet a couple times, December, January, we get it passed, and a new agreement, as you say, a modified agreement, using a combination of the statutory method and our own combination, to work something out that both towns approve, say, in March of this year, before we have to present in May. How long would it be before the commissioner might approve that?
First of all, in terms of getting the commissioner's approval, it's not a, you know, an extended period of time, you know? The difficulty will be you all coming to an agreement.
Correct.
You, you already had a, a couple of drafts, redrafts of amendments to your regional agreement. Your agreement was approved, I think, in nineteen ninety-one.
Mm-hmm.
A lot of things have happened, putting aside even the finance, which is the big thing, but there's other things, you know, that probably could be updated in, in, in more specific, and cleaned up, and so forth, but you've, I think you've done a lot of that.
Correct.
You know, and you may still want to certainly discuss it, and that's absolutely fine, but you've done some of that work. So, the, the big thing, it seems like, would be coming up with some sort of an assessment language, and how long that would take you all, with the, with the towns, to, you know, to sit down and discuss that, and what might be your, you know, your compromise agreement or something. I don't know how long that will take.
Right.
But from our perspective, I'll tell you, from our perspective, Michelle and I review any amendments to agreements or new agreements that might come in. How long that may take us to review it, I guess, depends on what shape the, the document is when it gets to us. We already have reviewed your earlier agreements, so, I mean, to the extent that changes dramatically, we'll have to start fresh, but much of it, I think, we've already done that review, so again, we're somewhat at the moment focused on that finance, financials. So, long-winded answer to basically say, "I really don't know," but I, I would think, if you can come to some local agreement, I mean, it, it should be able to be done.
Okay. Thank you.
To, to add to it, Christine, because you know, we have sent you the agreement, and you reviewed it, and I meant to say this at the beginning of the meeting, so shame on me. Whitman did not vote the agreement in the positive because of a financial problem. They voted it because they had an issue with language in pulling out of a district. Correct, Mr. Bazant, shaking his head? It had nothing to do with one town paying more than the other, because that was also another myth that was all over the internet. Whitman didn't vote it, because they wanted language change on what constituted withdrawing from a regional agreement.
Okay, well, that would be another area, obviously, where you have to come to some agreement.
But it was a whole different area. I just wanted to make that clear. Fred, and then Robbie, and then Chris. Fred?
Well, to Dawn, the foundation budget for Hanson in FY twenty was sixteen thousand, thirty-two dollars, three hundred and sixty-two, uh, I'm sorry, sixteen thousand...
Yeah, sixteen million.
Sixteen million, thirty-two thousand, three hundred and sixty-two dollars. Whitman's twenty-three million, eight hundred and thirty-seven thousand, seven hundred and twenty-six.
That's the number I have.
Okay, so, I mean, it is out there for DESI.
Okay.
The one concern I would have, and Frank, or anybody that would want to address this from the FinComs, getting into budget season, I think that this committee owes the towns a direction, as far as, you know, where we're going, so that they can be preparing budgets. I would think that that would be imperative.
Robbie?
So, a couple of questions. Under the, what Jeff was talking about, so we get everybody together at a table, can we just focus on the budget portion of it, and send that to you, and deal with the rest of the regional agreement stuff after? Both towns agree that this, everything else language-wise stays the same, we just need to deal with the budget, versus having to take on the whole document of everything else? Because otherwise, it'll go to my next question on the whole one-twelfth budget, because I see us going that way, to be quite honest. If we don't, if we can't sit down, just focus on the budget portion, get that done, send that in, that here's an amendment to the nineteen ninety-one regional agreement, that this is what the two towns agree to, then go back and deal with, with the pulling out of the region, or whatever, Whitman's concerns were, whatever, Hanson had for concerns for other stuff. Can we do that, just focus on that one part, send that out?
It depends. I'll say qualified yes. Districts submit amendments a lot, you know? So, you, you don't have to tear the whole agreement apart.
Okay.
But, but let me also say, to the extent, your nineteen ninety-one agreement, and I'm not saying this is the case, I can't remember really, but to the extent there is something, some deliberate language in there, that now, for some reason, I don't know why, but violates, let's say, an amendment that's been put in the law since nineteen ninety-one, I, I can't think of what that might be, but just let's say, for purposes of discussion, that it violates something, well, then, no, we have to have you fix that. Let's say it's a one-person, one-vote issue, just as an example, that's a constitutional requirement. So, let's just say, I don't know, you know, I don't know why, but let's just say it's in violation of that. Then we'd say, mm, you know, you really need to fix that. If it's, if it's an omission, the law put in place, let's say, we currently say, we remind people, you know, you have to have the commissioner approve all these amendments, so we want you to put that right in your language, and you don't have it. It's not a, it's, we like it to be there, but it's not a requirement.
Gotcha.
So, we wouldn't hold up an agreement on the basis of the omission of language that's in a statute, because you're obliged to follow the statute, whether it's in your regional agreement or not. But if you proactively have language in there, that's a violation.
No, I got you. Okay.
So, I'd have to look at it, but there's nothing on the surface that says a, a district or a town cannot submit an amendment, and just an amendment, not a full-scale. There's nothing to prevent that, as long as it's otherwise legal.
Yeah, and then, so then, secondly, first, we come to the two-town, town meeting, because one town rejects it, whether it goes back for a second time, or whatever, gets rejected again, we come to the two-town, town meeting. For the budget to be approved, is it a two-thirds vote, majority vote, when the two towns meet?
At the two-town meeting?
Yeah.
It's the residents, it's, first of all, the towns are disappeared at this point. It's the, it's the total number of people.
Yep.
And, all right, now I forget. Is it majority?
Majority.
I think it's majority.
All right, just making sure.
Yeah, so majority of the, the total residents from both towns, you know?
Okay. So, let's just say that it fails there, and we come into the one-twelfth. For the one-twelfth, it's, it's been told to us before, and I'm just clarifying, because it didn't come up when you were talking about it, that the one-twelfth budget would be based off of this year's budget? Or would it be, or would the, would the commissioner look at what we proposed for the budget?
So, twenty-one.
Yeah, right, right.
So, the law says, let's see, it shall be based on last year's budget, or of, I think, the lesser of, let's say, there are some times when a district may have a, a smaller budget, twenty-one, let's say you had a huge debt issue or something that disappeared, you know, so it's possible, you know, that your twenty-one budget, maybe not in your case, but...
It won't be, but that's okay.
You know, so, I think we take, like, the lesser of.
So, basically be this year's budget?
Yeah.
Is what we'd function at for the one-twelfth? Okay. I, I just want to make sure of that. Thank you.
Looking at the hour and knowing that both boards of selectmen have a meeting in twenty minutes, does anyone from either board of selectmen have a question, Christine? Because I don't want to make, I know you have meetings, and we so appreciate you all coming this evening, I'm just trying to be cognizant of everyone's time. Does anyone from either board have a question?
Can I ask a question?
Kate, can you tell everyone who you are, because not everyone will know?
Kate Federoff, Hanson Town Council. My question is this, and it's along the lines of the recent exchange. If we have a situation where we have town meeting failure, big tent failure, we're already in the one-twelfth, and we hit the December first deadline, and the state takes over, what does that picture look like? Because what's unclear to me is where, where the funding source will come from, and how the state determines how to apportion, and what that exactly does to your Chapter Seventy money going forward. So, worst-case scenario, can you kind of lay out that picture?
So, if the, if December 1 comes and you don't have a budget approved locally, the law basically says the commissioner shall undertake fiscal control of the district and set the final budget for the year. So, and that final budget that he sets for the year may be more than what was set as the 112th budget, it could be less than, it could be the same. We're going through this, actually, with a couple of districts right now, but basically what we would do is we would send out, and we have, in the current example, sent out letters to the school committee, the superintendent, the city, the town managers, boards of selectmen to say, tell us what you think, why you want a certain amount of money. You know, we're, we're going to set a final budget for the year, give us some information. You know, so we, we let the towns, the school, town side, give us some information in terms of what they think should be the final budget for the year. Ultimately, commissioner will set it. Basically, that would mean is the town, so we set the final, the commissioner sets the final budget, what would then need to happen is the treasurer or your business manager would then calculate the assessments by subtracting state aid, general fund revenues, again, using the statutory methodology, ensuring that both towns meet its minimum local contribution, any above, any amount above the minimum local contribution needed to support the budget established by the commissioner would be, would be proportioned according to your agreement method. You have to use current state aid, you know, so we might set it on the 19, the 2000, let's say, 20 level, even though it's 21. Well, you still use 21 revenues, 21 state aid, 21 minimum local contributions, you use all the factors, you know, for that given budget year. The number just coincidentally happens to potentially be what amount you had in the previous year. You still have to use all the same numbers. Your state aid is not impacted, you're still going to get the same state aid that, you know, the governor's, or the, I'm sorry, the final budget indicated. I forgot what else you said in terms of what else might be impacted, but nothing in terms of how much money state aid you're getting would be impacted. If you intended to use E and D, you can still use E and D. If you had certain general fund revenues, you can still use that. To the extent you have revolving accounts or whatever it is, you, the school committee always has the authority to, you know, to expend those funds without the state getting involved, quite honestly. That's your money. However, the commissioner takes over fiscal control, which basically means any fiscal items that had previously been fully the responsibility of the school committee is no longer fully the responsibility of the school committee, is the commissioner, through potentially a designee, will need to approve all your line item transfers, any collective bargaining agreements, any new positions, any new contracts over $25,000, you know, basically any financial decision that is being made at the district level. We will not have any impact, not any direct, I have to explain this, I was going to say we don't have any direct impact on the educational policies that you create, only to the extent that should you, let's say, want to establish a new, I don't know, kindergarten program or something, and to the extent you wanted to transfer money from one spot to another, well, yes, now we have to approve it. But we're not, we're not, we would not be weighing in on the value of whether you choose to have a new, a full-day kindergarten or preca, you know, a new program. What would be weighing in on is how are you going to get the money? Out of, out of what the commissioner has established as the final budget, how are you going to get the money to, to implement this, this new thing? So, state fiscal control is not a positive thing. Some districts have asked, some towns have asked, if there's more state money, if, if you're under fiscal control, no, not at all. There's no potent, there's no potential benefit from being under state control, not to you, not for us. It's just an additional level of oversight and scrutiny that, you know, you probably don't want to have.
Any other questions from anyone from the, Kate, you all set?
Thank you.
She said good.
She's all set.
Everybody else okay?
Justin, as Fred talked about earlier, Whitman-Hanson's in kind of the situation where we meet minimum local contribution, but not target share, so we're in the hold harmless area. As the funding breaks down now, where Whitman's paying 3.7 million over minimum and Hanson's .7 million, Whitman's a lot closer to getting to target share than Hanson is. I don't know if you would even know this, but how is, how, how would you know, can you split up whether one town comes out of hold harmless or is it tied at the district?
District. That would be my guess.
I'm not sure I really can answer that, but my suspicion is, no, I don't think you can, but again, I think there's some, you know, questions that I could probably fuddle around with, but I think you deserve probably the final answer, so, you know, if, certainly to the extent you have questions like that, and Michelle, did you write that down? Okay. Thank you. We will, you know, we can certainly talk to our finance people, and I can get you a better answer, because I don't want to be taking a while. Okay.
Anyone else from the boards? Thank you again for being so patient with us. Again, I know you have meetings and it's not easy. We took great pains to start this early, to get it here, so if you guys are all set, I will go to Mr. Small. He's been very patient.
Two things. One, oh, defer.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Randy Lomontino, Whitman Board of Selectmen. I just want to be clear and kind of cut something off, as I see it happening on social media tomorrow, although the gentleman isn't here tonight, but I think the door is open now that we have heard answers. I would hate to see anyone say that the town of Whitman is now going to force Hanson into something. I have spoken with one of the selectmen. I think that now that everyone's on the same playing field, we know what's going to transpire. Now we know where to go. Unfortunately, it's taken this long to get to this part, but I think we now have a clear path of what will happen, and I just don't want to see that rhetoric tomorrow that Whitman is not working with Hanson, and we've been great partners since the 50s, and I would think everybody on my board would agree with that. Whether or not it's easy to get to a, a middle ground, yet to be seen, but I think the, the offer would definitely be there.
Randy, that's one of the reasons we wanted to have this meeting. We've been a region for so long, and we've been two great towns, our kids are Whitman-Hanson. Our element is Whitman-Hanson. We're red and black, we both bleed it, and we want to come to some sort of agreement as a committee, as boards of selectmen, as residents, as finance committees. We want to come to this agreement. So I agree with you wholeheartedly. Mr. Small's been very patient, no one else, and then Chris. Go ahead, Fred.
Two things. One, Justin, I did ask that question quite a while ago and was told that they are tied together, so they can't be separated. What I would like to see, and I'm glad to make the motion, for us to utilize the statutory method for the FY21 budget with an eye on being able to come to an agreement within, or amend our regional agreement, that something would be satisfactory, but so that we can give the proper direction, because I don't think that there is enough time in order to have an amended agreement, have it voted on by town meeting, and for the FinComs to be able to come up with budgets. I just don't know that we have that amount of time.
To answer your question, Fred, if I may, we're having a school committee meeting next Wednesday. I'd like to see you hold that motion and let some of this settle in with everybody in this room to try and wrap their heads around it between now and then and see what Wednesday night brings. It's only a week away. I'm just asking, I think that we've heard a lot tonight, and we've come to what I think is a great area, and again, I'm just one person, so that's my two cents, but Laura, I know you have a meeting.
Yeah, I just want to thank you for bringing Ms. Lynch and, I'm sorry, I don't remember your last name. Okay, thank you, here and for the information and the, and the, you're asking me to speak up? That's never a problem for me. Maybe the mic's not working, but I appreciate the opportunity to hear what Ms. Lynch and her compatriot has, have got to say and the civil dialogue and the, I just want to let you know that the Hanson Board of Selectmen stands ready to respond to whatever decision it is that you guys make. You've got the first move and, you know, and we are ready to work with you, with the town of Whitman or whatever, to see this through. I would really hate to see it get to a point where we're going to have the state take over. So I'm hoping whatever move you make, it doesn't result in that. Thank you.
Thank you. Fred, did you get both your questions up?
Yeah.
Chris?
I'm set. So.
Thank you.
Robbie had a question.
I'm sorry?
Yeah, Robbie had a question from Ms. Lynch a little while ago, and I wanted to clarify. So, very specifically, if I'm looking at the agreement correctly, so if we had a scope for a regional amendment agreement committee, and the scope was simply to send you an amendment that said the towns wish to amend Section 4 E subsection 1 as it deals to the apportionment of costs, can we focus on just that area and not resubmit the entire agreement? So I know Robbie kind of was, that's the path he was going down. I think your point was, we can't submit an agreement with revisions that are in conflict with statute, but if we simply sent a paragraph in saying, we wish to amend Section E, Section 4 E 1, from the following to the following, and that was it, would that work?
Yeah, the difference being is we would look at the whole agreement, because what the commissioner would be signing is, you know, basically, that would have to be incorporated into your agreement. So, I mean, we, we'll look at it. I mean, I, again, I'm not saying there's something illegal in your current, I mean, you, it was, it was okay in 1991, so it's just what might have changed.
Well, you actually just reviewed it, so the only thing we would be changing is that one part, so everything should be theoretically okay.
Well, that's, we reviewed it, if you want to submit that revision.
Right.
You know, but there were some, I think there was some.
Yeah, there was. No, you're, you're correct. Okay.
There are, but I just, I didn't know if there was any opportunity for perhaps the commissioner to work with us on a phased approach, because I get if we gave you an agreement and it is in conflict, I get that.
Yeah.
But I would also argue that if we do nothing, the agreement that we have today is the same whether we send it to the commissioner or not. So if we do nothing, that, that agreement, if it's in conflict, we're not, we're not changing it, so.
No, I understand. I mean, you know, I'll, I'll say this, we are certainly going to work with you on that, and we can go back and look at the agreement and say, never mind the amendment that you all worked on, let's say if we just took your 91 agreement, is there something in that where if you don't change it, just, you know, we would say, oh, jeez, there's no way we can approve that? Is there anything, we can go back and look at that, and, I mean, chances are, I mean, I don't know, but we can certainly let you know that, so that then, let's say we say, no, there's, you know, there's some things we'd recommend, there's some, we encourage you to do a comprehensive amendment, but there's nothing illegal. So in that case, then you can concentrate on just submitting what you just said. We're substituting this language for this section of, section four of.
Because I think it's going to be easier, and it's just, everybody needs to focus on that budget.
Yeah, I mean, we would, I would, I would just say, I would encourage you to look at a comprehensive amendment, it's 1991, you know, a lot of things have changed since then.
We will next year.
Whether it's illegal or not, it's not the whole situation.
And I think what we're trying to get the commissioner away in is, we fully recognize that.
Yeah, yeah.
But we're, I think, what I'm hearing everyone say is, we're trying to avoid the commissioner actually running the budget.
Right, and you want to, you're in a little time crunch, you know, so.
Okay.
Fred, and then Dan.
Thank you.
Will the commissioner do any of this work or consider anything without it being approved by our town meetings? Because it's got to be approved by the voters first.
No, no, of course not, no.
Correct.
All, let me, let me back up and say, Michelle and I, potentially, if presented with a legit amendment from the school committee, or, you probably have a provision there that says 10% of the town voters, so, so if an amendment is legitimately submitted to us for review, we will review it, and we will indicate back, either we have some issues or, or let's just say we don't, we will indicate back that this looks like an agreement, an amendment that we would submit to the commissioner for approval. And at that point, commissioner's always the final say, but he has us, you know, to be doing this, so typically, if it gets past us, and by the way, our legal office, then I can be pretty much assured that if your town meetings were to approve it, we could safely send it immediately up to the commissioner, and we wouldn't have to go through any other action. So we always ask, submit it to us first, we'll take a look, give you what our experience has shown over time, you know, to be sort of acceptable and not talk to our legal office, et cetera. If it gets past us, hopefully, it'll, it'll be okay, once you, locally, just send to the commissioner.
Dan, thank you.
Okay. So what I see now, after more discussion, is our job, maybe next week, first thing, is get the Regional Agreement Committee going, and it's a two-part thing, first part, highest priority, settle this out, get this done, pass it in, and then go back and clean up the rest of the garbage that's been due for 20 years.
Yeah.
We don't want the state touching anything, we know how the state, the higher up in government to go, the worse it gets. We don't want to hit that 112th, so whatever we have to do to get this done before March is what these two towns have to do to get together, to get it done, or it's going to, you're going to be paying for it in the long run, because whatever we had missing this year is going to be double next year, because you won't have the same funds.
Right. Robbie? I was just going to suggest if we invite the selectmen and FinComs to the school committee, just because we're going to be, next Wednesday, because we're going to be discussing it, and just with Fred's making a motion on a vote, I'd actually want input from both selectmen before doing it, to be quite honest with you.
Michelle, did you get that?
I did.
Thank you.
Chris? I guess I'm just a little confused why we would want to vote at this point without discussing.
Oh, I agree. That's why I want the selectmen and FinCom here. I, I agree.
Because to Chris's point.
I agree.
Anything.
I wouldn't vote anything yet.
If, if it's not statutory, it's an alternative agreement, and, you know, I, I just don't see the need at this point to take a vote. What I see as a need is to come together and to work towards, you know, a solution to get to the statutory method. So, all right, that's my take, I guess.
That's why I want to invite the selectmen and FinComs.
Yep. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Rick Anderson, Whitman Finance Committee. I just figured with, with the fact that the entire Whitman Finance Committee is here this evening and the fact that, you know, you're looking for some perspective, I think there was a great question by a member of the school committee earlier, and that was, what was the intent of the education reform that was implemented in 1993? The bottom line for the Whitman Finance Committee may not be the same as the Hanson Finance Committee, or the school committee, or the Whitman or Hanson Boards of Selectmen. Our responsibility is to recommend to Whitman Town Meeting what is in the best interest of the taxpayers of the community. So the intent of the education reform was to recommend an assessment formula to be based on an aggregate wealth-based methodology. The Whitman Finance Committee certainly recognizes the challenges faced by taxpayers in both towns. We will continue to work with all the stakeholders in this process each year, but the board unanimously voted last month, and I believe you have the communication in your read file, that the Whitman Finance Committee will not recommend to the taxpayers of Whitman at town meeting any school assessment that is calculated with anything other than the statutory method. So I know, do you, do you have that communication that came from our? Yes, we do. Yeah, we do. So again, I'm just giving you the perspective of the Whitman Finance Committee, again, we're here to be part of the process, but I just want to let you know as we voted last month.
Well, Rick, I think our hope tonight, if you heard from the members, and I can't speak for all members, is that we're hoping the input from Christine and from different people would maybe let that sit for a week and, and maybe your recommendation might change. We're trying to, at some point, to come to some sort of agreement to keep both of these towns together, to get a budget, as you heard from members and different people in the crowd, we don't want the state to take over our budget, and I don't think you do either, so that's kind of what we're hoping for. It may be, who knows what, but that's one of the reasons I'd like to see it sit. Mr. Small hasn't made it yet, we were discussing it, am I correct?
I said I'd be glad to make the motion, nobody seconded, so.
So that's kind of where we're at. We're trying to get more facts out.
Understand.
We, we want to keep everybody, if we can, because there was so much rumor mill between in 2000. in 2000, we had a 91 agreement, in 91, we weren't all looking at this, we were all looking at this. The world's changed, so we're trying to make it work, I think.
Okay, appreciate it.
And I thank you guys so much for coming. I know that another meeting out and another night out is not what everybody wants to do. I think, looking at everyone in this room, there are several committees in several different areas of government, and we spend plenty of time together, so having said that, I appreciate everyone in the room for coming. Is there anything else to ask Christine and Michelle, Mr. Salvucci?
Yes, I'm Dan Salvucci, Vice Chair of Board of Selectmen, Town of Whitman. Just to let you know that the Board of Selectmen unanimously voted to accept only the statutory method, as far as, on the school, on the Whitman-Hanson School Committee's budget. One member was not there, it was a 4-0 vote, and one question I have, there's two members of the board that are looking about saying, "Well, if we do accept the statu, if we do accept the statutory method, should we try to ease into it?" And my question is, is why would we ease into it?
Good, Chris. My answer would be, because we are a community, as I see it, and we have been for a long time, and just as a matter of good faith, this snuck up on everyone, and I feel as though it would be unfair and unwise to try to force Hanson into making up the difference in one year. It's pretty clear that that would have a huge impact on their community, and we very well could end up, you know, at a super town meeting, and the state might take over, so there are other things to consider.
Okay, that being said, I can understand that, but look at the Town of Whitman, and what we've done over the years, was Hanson giving us consideration.
It was an unknown.
Right, it was an unknown, absolutely. So I mean, I think if we accept the statutory method, and both towns end up saying, "All right, this is what we're going to go," I think it is what it is. I think we need to accept it and let the chips fall where they may, because both towns are going to, either, are going to suffer one way or another, whether or not we go with a third, a third, a third, we're already at our max, and just to let everybody know, regardless of the method that we use, the schools will not be hurt. They will still get the, you know, I mean, we have a method, I mean, unless the state takes over, but I'm just saying, the schools will get their budget. It depends, it's all I'm saying is, where is the money coming from, Whitman or Hanson, and how it's distributed? But, you know, I mean, we are already, and you know, I'm a selectman of Whitman, I have to protect Whitman, we are already at our max, right? We're like $3,000 under the leveller, we found that out tonight. We are at our max, and our department's had to cut everything to get what we could get, and give you at least somewhat what you wanted, and to turn around and say, "Well, Hanson's going to be really hurt, because if we don't do a third, a third, a third," I have to say, "What about Whitman?" That's all.
Yeah, so I think, I heard Ms. Lynch say no less than five times in her opening remarks, that her recommendation was both towns work together. So I think there's a reason for that, and I think it would be a little bit premature to try and just come to an immediate conclusion rather than to work together. So I can't, I know we're, we're putting a lot of stock in what Ms. Lynch said in terms of understanding, and I think we're even asking questions on her intent. I think if we're going to do that, then we should be pretty consistent, because what I also heard her say was, her recommended best practice was not to hastily make any type of assessment change, to talk to all the community partners, all the elected officials, make sure everyone understood the impact, and that we did that in a rational, well-thought-out manner, so I just wanted to make sure that, not putting words in your mouth.
Thank you for your patience.
Dave Quinero, Hutton Ross Drive, Whitman. I'm coming to you as a private citizen, not as a member of the finance committee, for what I'm about to say here. One thing is, just a point of clarification, is that the Town of Whitman, we did not vote, we voted at the table the vote on the assessment, so we didn't take a yea-nay vote at all. Whether or not that matters or not, I don't know. But I'd like to express my concerns in regards to the discussions that the committee is having, that it appears that the school committee's presupposition is that you're bound by the current agreement, and from what I hear tonight, that's just not correct, that the committee can present any method to the towns in regards to the assessment. And also what I heard tonight is that the state intents, intent of the statutory method was to make the assessment more equitable, based on the town's ability to contribute to the district. Secondly, I'd like to express my concern that the, that this committee has been discussing in regards to a future phased approach to the assessment. And this is based on the fact that the committee did not evaluate this, did not use the statutory method since its inception, and therefore has been putting an undue burden on the taxpayers of Whitman. And, you know, let me put it a different way, is that by not using the statutory method, the assessment has essentially had the taxpayers of Whitman subsidizing the Town of Hanson. And I don't, you disagree with that? Come up and have your disagreement. So, so I asked this committee to take history of this issue in your thoughts when you make your vote, and I'll also disagree with a comment that was made by a committee member, is that, that the statutory method was, was a quote-unquote "unknown." This was not an unknown, this information was presented to towns and to school committees. So at some point, this, the state disseminated this information to the committee. How it got to this point, who knows at this point? Who knows? Nobody knows at this point, but hopefully, we can find that out. So that's just my comments tonight, so thank you for the time.
Dave, to answer, to answer your question from, I think, a committee point of view, and again, I can't speak for the whole committee, there's a reason the state has not just said everything statutory. As you heard from Christine, they said, "We still have an alternative method." What plays into that, in my opinion, because I've done a lot of reading on it, is there's no cut and dry, the demographics of the towns across the state are totally different.
Right.
At the current time, Whitman has sewerage, we'll just use them for an example, seeing as we are, Whitman-Hanson. Whitman's building houses 40 and 50 at a time. To answer Mr. Salvucci's question, this assessment could change rapidly in the next three to four years, and Hanson could be sitting here saying, "We're subsidizing Whitman." So to be fair, that's what I think people, one of the reasons we're having tonight's meeting is to say, "Hey, we've got to look at this for the future of the school district," because this could change, just as I said, as you know, you live in Whitman, I own a business in both towns, Whitman and Habington, I should say, and they're building houses, which brings up, every time the house values get to 400, 550, it brings up the total revenue for the Town of Hanson, and that's part of what it's based, Town of Whitman, that's part of what it's based on. So this could turn around, just like year to year, we had pupil assessment, you know, per pupil assessment, and the pendulum would swing one year, and Hanson it all more, and then it'd swing back, and Whitman it all more, and it'd go back and forth like this. And the last several years, the burden was on Whitman, if history suits me correctly, because of student population in Whitman, because of more housing, more apartments, more of that what's going on. So I think we need to take, just my point of view, we need to be careful how we move forward, because I understand your job is to protect the taxpayers, the committee's job is to protect the students, and I think that's what you heard some of tonight. We want to get what's best for the educational well-being of students in Whitman and Hanson. We don't separate them like that, we try to keep it, you know, we don't get into the demographics of what educational services are provided to what service, we're called Whitman-Hanson. So if that answers any of that question, I have your questions, Robbie, all over the place.
No, I know. When you get to it.
Can I just comment on that?
Sure.
In, in, to be argumentative, but you have to remember, the assessment, when it was originally approved, was based on, what, a 1950, 60, 70s data? So in that data, provided future estimates on which way the towns were going to move financially, in, in, you know, a bunch of different factors. That hasn't come to fruition, and that's why the assessment today is not being equitable to the Town of Whitman.
Thank you. Chris? I just wanted to respond to Mr. Quinero's comment about it being an unknown. What I was referring to is, it was an unknown to this, to this committee, and all prior committees going back, we went back and asked, you know, "Anybody know the statutory method?" and, you know, and it was unknown. I understand it was in the finance committee handbook at some point, a member of Whitman brought it to my attention, and then a second member brought it to my attention, and then, so that's when we started looking into it. So as far as, you know, for all intensive purposes, it was an unknown to this committee. Christine has had her hand up, and then Dawn, I'm sorry.
Just for purposes of clarification, when I was asked about the intent of the education reform law, I did not say that the intent was to make assessments equal or fair. I mean, I just want to clarify that, that's not what I said. I said towns, individual towns. Your assessments are to two different districts, you have to remember, you're part of a Whitman-Hanson, and you're also part of a vocational district. So the state makes that determination, how those monies are split. You also make your own determination as to how your ultimate assessments are split, in terms of, as we discussed before, minimum contribution is a big piece of it, but you have another piece of it that's over and above the minimum contribution, that's based on your regional agreement. So I guess if the state were trying to make it equitable, and in terms of assessments, it would be a totally different law. So I just, I just didn't want you to misunderstand what I said. And in terms of outreach efforts, that, I think it's water under the bridge at this point, but just again, to be perfectly clear, the state has done outreach to cities, towns, school committees, superintendents, business managers, it's not just related to school committees. We've, I've had personally have meetings with mass municipal, with the town accountants associations, you know, a lot of different people, and it's certainly not just school committees. So again, water under the bridge, you know, it's done, it's over, but any number of people, this law has been on the books since 1993, so anybody could have known about it, you know, at that point. So anyway, I just want to be clear in terms of my comments.
Dawn?
I think it's important to recognize there's a reason the default method is the statutory method, because it is the most equitable. No one wants to hurt the children in our district, and we don't want the state involved, but we do need to recognize that the end result is the statutory method, for a reason.
Fred, and Robbie, I'm sorry.
Mr. Salvucci, are you still here?
Yeah.
Being a Socia Votech rep.
Yeah.
Where Votecs are part of the same methodologies.
Yeah.
How are we assessed in Whitman and Hanson for, is it statutory?
Statutory method. We, the statutory method was accepted in 1995, and it's always been that way, and once, on the per pupil cost, we'll say for Whitman, I think it's a little over $11,000 a student, for Hanson, I think it's like 12-something, 13,000 students, I haven't got the exact numbers, but then you get the situation, Cohasset's the 17,000 and 18,000 students, it's on statutory method. The only thing, and of course, we pay a lot for Socia Votech, because we have 140-something students, where Cohasset may have six or seven. So I mean, we do pay a lot. You've got Whitman, Hanson, Rockland, and Abington pay probably 90% of the budget, because we have the most students, but the less per, per student cost is assessed to us. The only thing that's assessed per pupil is capital costs, because that's more kids using those, that's it.
Thank you.
Robbie?
Question for Jeff. So, let me be that guy, to get on the 1/12th road still.
Yep.
Because I had a little hope for a little while, and I'm losing it again. So 1/12th budget in 2021, July 1st, what's that do to us?
If we're using fiscal numbers for this year?
Using this year's fiscal numbers.
We're, just think of a 2% salary increase across the board, 1.1 mil, we're short already. That's not contractual cost with transportation, with SJ, with collegiate press. Just strictly looking estimate, 1.1, 1.2 in salary, off the top, if we're, we haven't moved forward.
Okay.
So that's a big fear for me, and I said that in September, if we get to, to that, a 1/12th isn't a good thing, and it will impact our kids.
So just right off the bat, it's 1.2 million, before you factor anything else into it?
Rough, that's rough.
Okay.
You know, being without somebody projecting budget numbers right now, that's rough.
Okay, thank you.
The one thing too, as far as the statutory method, people have talked about that, we won't get numbers until, till January, revenue numbers. So talking about projecting budgets, we haven't used that in the past, so I won't get those numbers from DOR until middle of January, anyway.
Okay, thank you.
Chris?
So.
We have two wonderful ways of being very patient.
Very quick, very quick, because I think, I keep hearing the same thing, and I guess I just, I, I, we keep talking about the state's intent, and I think that's a very dangerous place to play. I think we can read what it says, and then we can all have our own opinion. I can have my opinion as to what the intent was, you can have your opinion, Ms. Lynch can have her opinion, everyone can have their opinion. But again, I need to be very clear, I heard her clearly say, as an employee of a state agency, that the states, what they did was, they gave us multiple options to choose from, not, "You have to pick this one." I, I, I just need to make sure that that is very explicitly clear.
Mm-hmm. With the exception of, if we go to certain levels, then the statutory is the default method. So they let us pick, but if we can't decide, and one town keeps rejecting, then it's definitively statutory, and it's the only way, or if it goes under state control, it's done statutory.
Right, but it's still allowable to make your own deal, is what they say. Okay, you've been very patient, I'm sorry.
Thank you. I'm Kathleen Otina, and I'm a brand-new member of the Whitman FinCom, and my question is probably going to sound naive, but if this book, this law's been on the books for 26 years, why is this the first time that it's become a point of discussion? It should have, I think it requires an affirmative vote, vote by the towns to go with statutory versus go with the regional amendments, so why, what happened that brought this to light?
As, as, I think your question was answered just about two minutes ago by Christine, as far as no one knew.
No one on this committee, no?
Go ahead. I think Jeff, you could speak to that, and how we came to this point.
So, so as we went through the process last year, after the Whitman voters at Town Meeting passed over, there was a question about statutory versus agreement method. So we started doing some research, spoke to a couple of school committee members, and as we dug deeper into this, and after some conversations with Christine, both member communities, no one spoke to the taxpayers in either Hanson or Whitman about two different methodologies. Looking back in my office, I was told this is the way it's always been done. So now revisiting that, and asking Christine Lynch, "Did we do it appropriately?" She said, "Well, a vote of the communities, affirmative vote of both communities for the budget at the May Town Meeting would meet the standard of the agreement method." What I see is a default or a deficiency, is that neither communities were given the opportunity to understand what the statutory method was. Now, there was conversation in the 2018 regional agreement that mentioned the statutory method. Now, speaking to members of that committee, there was no designation that there would be a financial impact to either community if the statutory method was used. That's my understanding, I wasn't on that agreement, but being relatively intelligent and having some conversations, I think there was, there was either a, a lack of a conversation by the regionals, by- was, there was either a, a lack of a conversation by the regional, by Mr. Reed or somebody from Mars, when they were speaking to the regional agreement, committee, or a lack of questioning from our central office administration to what the financial impact would be in both communities. It seemed like that was not documented in the minutes of those meetings. And by talking to people who were generally invested in the regional agreement, that didn't come up. As it came up, after the, the passover of the Whitman town meeting, we started to dig into this and say, there is two methods here. There is legislation back from 93. There is information in the regional, or the town, FinComs have had information about statutory versus agreement in regional schools. Town accountants have had that, and I think that's what Christine alluded to. This isn't just a school committee thing that I can validate for the members of this committee. As we brought this forward, we didn't know there were two different methods. George and I didn't know there were two different methods till we started digging into Mass Association of Regional, of school business managers, that type of information. I don't think it was anybody's fault, so to speak, but I think there was a, there was not accurate information presented to this committee to make a decision, and to members of the, both communities to make effective decisions. If that were to be true, I think in 2017, when the regional agreement committee was formed, instead of now trying to patchwork it, saying, we should be using a statutory method based upon local minimum contributions, both communities would have said, hey, look, this is where we should be. Let's gradually put it in, or however it can work. One community versus another doesn't seem to be overpaying over a period of time. So that's where we ended up, coming in new last year. This was, as I was told, that the regional agreement should be passed over relatively easily. Much to my dismay now. That's all we've done for six and a half months, is talk about the regional agreement. What we need to keep in perspective though, and my fear is that 1/12 and the commissioners, and I felt we had some good, good vibes in this, in this, in this meeting here, is that we want to keep the kids and our two towns working together collaboratively. It's been good. It's like, it's like a marriage. You have good times and bad times, and things go back and forth. But we are a community. And I was at an athletic Hall of Fame induction ceremony, and Suma said, said it very well, that we're a community of, of, together, and we work together to produce great kids and great athletes. And I would hate to see that dissipate because of lack of information. And I think we have really good people in this, in these two towns and working together, however it is, to make sure we have a budget. What I fear is, is laying off, or pink slipping 100-plus people this year, because we're going to go to a 1/12 budget, and we're already short. We worked really hard to get the budget we had this year. Even though we cut, there was great conversations last year in both communities to come up with funds, to adequately support the schools, or to support us what we needed to get done. I'd hate to see that dissipate in November of this year, looking at fiscal 21.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Thank you for your patience. I know there's been quite a bit of dialogue on this subject.
Good dialogue. My name is Rosemary Conley. I am on Whitman FinCom. I just wanted to correct a mistake. I think people are saying that Whitman will pay less. And they won't. If we reuse the statutory, we're going to continue paying the same amount. We're not even legally allowed, I believe, I just talked to Frank, we're not allowed to pay less. What Whitman is asking essentially is for everybody to work towards that target share. We all are here to educate kids. All that money that's going to be put in isn't going over to Whitman. It's going towards target share. And we're inviting Hanson to come along in the efforts towards meeting that target share. Whatever way you choose to do that, it should be the goal. I think we all agree on that. We want to have great athletes and well-educated children as a priority. And we want to supply the schools with the monies to do so. The state says target share is what you should be going towards. Not the, not the bottom of the barrel, not just opening your, your building, you know, foundation budget. We are only inviting Hanson along. And I, I hope that people see that. I hope they see that Whitman is going to, is paying $20 more per student once we add in that state aid, if you want to contribute it. We're not going to stop, because we can't. But we want to invite you along, because it's best for the children. And everybody up here has talked about what, how each person's taking advantage of this. I just think the kids are getting ripped apart in the middle of that. Let's get our heads back towards these kids. Okay? Thank you.
Okay. Does anyone have anything new to bring to the table before I entertain a motion to adjourn? Or anyone have any other questions, a comment?
So, yeah, so the one question, I see Andy back there, Andy Wall.
Who?
Andy Wall, our counsel.
Our attorney.
Andy's right there, I think, sitting behind the podium.
I think just as an overarching question for Andy, because I know we had some counsel at last meeting, are we, are we, I guess I just want to make sure that, is there anything that Andy heard tonight in terms of legal representation of the district, that he has any concerns that he'd wish to address? He's here, I'm sure we're paying for his time. I figure before we let him go, is there anything that he wants to let us know about in terms of anything that he's heard here tonight?
Yeah, no. First of all, I mean, Christine, I think, did a fabulous job. She's probably, for those of you who haven't heard from her before, she's the preeminent expert on regional school districts at DESI. And so having her here as a resource tonight, I think, was incredible for the, for the school committee, for the other boards who've been here to hear tonight. I didn't hear anything that, that changed my mind, or was different from my understanding of what the law requires. So I think the committee heard and got a good education and guidance tonight in terms of what their legal obligations and options are.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you.
Chris?
I just want to say I'm optimistic. And the tone of this meeting gives me optimism. Looking across the table and knowing how invested, you know, we all are really, but I just, I think we can get through this. And I, and I really appreciate Robbie giving us that, maybe that path to get there soon. That's always a great idea. So, yeah, I'm optimistic. I think we're going to get it done.
Right, Mr. Hanson, Whitman Selectmen. This has been an incredible evening for me, just to hear the experts. Outstanding job. And all you folks who I know are here for one reason, the children. And that's what we have to remember. This is all about the kids. It's not about which pocket we're taking money from, Hanson, Whitman. It's the region. We have to take care of the children. We have to educate them the best we can. Now, I'll touch on what Vice Chair Salvucci said, that he doesn't seem to be as amenable to a staggered type of a way of doing business with the budget. I would say, I made the motion at our selectman meeting to go with statutory. And the reason I did was because of one thing. This Board of Selectmen has a fiduciary responsibility to the taxpayers of Whitman to spend their money wisely and do the best we can with what we have. That being said, our children are part of that. We have to do the best we can for them as well. It's a very fine line. But as many of you might know, I had a very tough reelection this past May. And we all got pounded on one thing, that we don't do enough for education, and we don't save enough money to lower their taxes. Now, I'm not sure where that meets. However, I think it is the Board of Selectmen's responsibility to fight for the taxpayer. Now, the nuclear option here is the 1/12 budget and the state takeover. That's a death sentence. We don't need that. So we have to work together in both communities to come to a solution that both towns can live with. But I get the sense from my committee that we have to look at the citizens of Whitman first. But we have, I think, some will room where we can come to some kind of solution. I'm hopeful of that. Can't guarantee it, but I am hopeful. Because when it's all said and done, we have to wake up with each other in the morning. Right? So we have to go forward. So I'm hopeful that we can all work together. But clearly, this is not a personal thing. The Board of Selectmen have to work for the taxpayers and citizens of Whitman. And we will do that. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Brian, before you leave.
I feel optimistic again.
Before you leave, no, as the charge of the 10 of us, we have kind of a unique charge. Because some of us are from Whitman, and some of us are from Hanson. But not one of us walks down the side of this building, or any elementary school, and go, there's a Whitman kid, there's a Hanson kid, there's a Whitman kid, help them. We want all of them educated to the best of our ability. They're our students. That's what our charge is as elected officials. So we, I appreciate what you're saying. But we are in a unique position, because we represent both. And I've walked through this building with every one of these members and never seen one of them say, that's a Whitman kid, give him a more lunch than that's a Hanson kid. We don't know the difference. We're Whitman-Hanson.
Right. But I would say one thing is sometimes, depending on what board you're on, you might get blinders sometimes. And I think our charge is, is the money, and how we can. And you folks got elected as representatives of your town, to not only represent those children, but represent those taxpayers as well. So you have to balance that. So just keep that in mind. I think we'll do better.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else before I entertain a motion to adjourn? I entertain a motion to adjourn?
So a little second.
All those in favor? Thank you, everyone.